Yes, if you would please. Do you have it? I think we all do. Okay. Good evening. I'm calling to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session on July 17, 2023 at 5:01 PM. We'll start with review of agenda and items on consent. Do any of the councilors have any comments?
Are you doing comments? Or are you hearing?
Well, first I'm doing the agenda. Any comments on the agenda and the items on consent? Hearing none. Now we'll go to councillor concerns. Councillor Linville?
Yes. I think that most of the council members received at least one comment from a citizen about concerns about fireworks. And I received more than that. And although I don't have a position at this point about whether or not our city should ban fireworks in the future, I felt it was important to bring up their concerns under councillor concerns. And I'm wondering if we have, do we have information about whether we had any active fires or police calls related to illegal fireworks?
I don't know about police calls. There was no fire-related calls.
Okay. Well, I think it might be something, obviously, we're past the Fourth of July at this point, but it may be something to, for us to discuss at a future time. And I know that, at least in my community, where I live, I'm just saying where I live, the fireworks started at least a week before and actually are still going on.
Are you talking about illegal or legal?
No, I'm talking about legal fireworks. I'm talking about noise.
Got it.
The concern that I heard from citizens was certainly about the potential for fireworks, for fires, because they were adjacent to people's homes. And then the other had to do with just simply the noise and how very loud many of them were. So I'm just bringing it up so that, I don't know if any of the other councillors have any comment or mayor has any comments about it, but what you've heard and maybe either a suggestion on how we might discuss it in the future or not.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, councillor Linville. And I did get four or five emails and had various conversations. I heard, I live in Villebois, and at about three o'clock heard the loudest explosion I've ever heard in my life in a residential area. I don't know what it was, if it was a firework or what, I'm calling it an explosion. And they continued until about 11:30, and I have not heard much since. I would know because one of my cats would definitely indicate that.
Yeah.
But I think it's terrible. I don't know what is, I mean, I did look, I think it's terrible that people are using illegal fireworks, to the degree they seem to be. Illegal fireworks are illegal. They are already banned. I did see, you know, families along the curb with a hose doing the, what we call the legal fireworks. But I have talked to people about how frustrated they are, not only in Wilsonville, but also in every neighboring community. So there's, I think we could bring this up for a discussion later because we can't solve it right away. We could certainly go back and ban all of the legal fireworks if that's what the community wants to do and make it so that because of the people who operate in a way that scares people and presents fire dangers, those can't even be possible. Because we are having drier weather and there have been, you know, deadly fire incidents, even with the legal fireworks. And it's difficult for the police. The police did come, the police were getting calls, I know that. I don't think we have enough police to drive around every corner with all of our wooded neighborhoods to ever be able to see everyone. So councillor Barry, do you have any concerns related to that?
Yes. So I also received, had conversations with different people who were concerned. One person said she stayed up all night because she was so worried about the dry vegetation near her home, you know, catching fire. And, you know, we've had really terrible wildfires in the past few years that I'm deeply concerned about it too. I love fireworks, I think they're spectacular, but I kind of like them in a controlled environment. I'd love to hear if the city got any response to the leisure show that the city put on as opposed to fireworks that were exploding.
I'm interested, it was very well attended, very well received.
And I should have added, I went to that, it was jam-packed and really fun.
Well, it's a safe alternative, but the people that are setting off illegal fireworks might attend that show, but they're still going to set off illegal fireworks.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the best thing we can do as a city is to really get on top of this starting in May and just have repeated columns in the Boon's Ferry Messenger, get it on social media, that illegal fireworks, if they cause property damage or, you know, God forbid loss of life or anything like that, that there's serious repercussions for that kind of behavior. And then there's a separate conversation about whether you want to ban legal fireworks. And those are two distinct issues. I think the thing, the most complaints that we get are about the illegal fireworks. It's the stuff that goes up in the air and makes really loud noises, bottle rockets, the M-80s that they, you know, the mortars they throw up in the air, those are the ones that we get the most complaints about, the ones that sit on the curb.
And they should be getting complaints.
Aren't the huge problem.
Right. But people do get burned. Like I did talk to one family where the four-year-old grandchild got burned from a sparkler. I mean, they're dangerous stuff. I mean, they're fun, but they're dangerous. And I'm also concerned, not just in the summertime with the wildfires, but like at New Year's, when people shoot off fireworks and stuff. I haven't really monitored how that is handled in Wilsonville, but, you know, maybe that's a time to say something too. I don't know. It's up to you.
The hard part about banning things is that you have to see somebody do it.
Right. You have to catch them.
And so it begs the question as to whether there's any efficacy to actually banning it as opposed to educating people about the illegal stuff specifically. But like I said, if you want to do a ban, we can consider that. It's certainly within your policy purview to do that. Other cities have. Some cities tie it to the fire warnings, like if it reaches a certain point on that fire wheel danger, then they just tie it to that. So there's options out there to consider.
I'm all about education. I'd for sure want to start there.
So to follow up on this, why don't we, why don't we hear from you later about how to approach that? And I know there are some, I don't want to create a huge project out of it, but I know there were news articles about a nearby city that has banned everything to do with fireworks, and I think they had more fires than ever.
Oh, geez.
So there has to be some cities that perhaps is neighbor to neighbor, within neighborhoods, and we ask our own residents to work amongst themselves in, with our education program to try to compel each other, the people and their family, their friends. Somebody knows the people who are setting these off. They're not all unknown people.
Well, you know, I think enforcement is important, but if I could make an analogy, we have speeding laws that say you only go this speed, but we know that people go farther than that in their driving. But that doesn't mean that we throw it out just because it's not able to be enforced 100%.
Right.
So I would suggest that we have this discussion maybe earlier than May, so that if we're really going to do something, we have an opportunity to look at it from the perspective of whether it's something this community would be in the best interest of the community, either way, to ban or not ban, so.
Yeah, we can queue something up for February or March of the next calendar year.
And perhaps earlier than that because of the point about New Year's.
When do you want it on the calendar?
Let's try December. Let's see how our calendar looks in the first of December, by the first of December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so that will, any other councillor concerns? Okay, thank you for bringing those points up. And I'd like to now start our pre-council work session with the Park System Development Charge Methodology Analysis with Mr. Ammerman.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council. Chris Ammerman, Parks and Recreation Director. And as Mayor said, I'm here tonight for round two, work session two of Park System Development Analysis. So just to recap, the first work session was June 5th of this year. And as a refresher, the City of Wilsonville Parks and Rec Department engaged FCS Group to evaluate its system development charges to ensure long-term financial viability for at least the next 10 years. The project team presented information on the recalculated Parks SDC based on recent growth estimates, project lists, and inventory data. During the second work session, the intent is to recap the process to this point, answer questions from council, and go over next steps. And joining us virtually is the FCS Group project team led by Project Manager Tim Wood. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Tim to start the presentation.
Great. Hello, councillors, can you hear me this evening?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yes, my name is Tim Wood, I am a project manager with FCS Group. With me are Zek Hazel and John Gilervucci, who round out our project team. You'll be hearing from them as this presentation goes on. So just to give you a sense for our agenda this evening, we'll give you a quick background on SDCs, make sure that everybody's up to speed on what goes into and out of an SDC, review the city's current Parks SDC, and then I'll have Zek run you through the results of the analysis for the Wilsonville Parks SDC, including Parks SDC calculation, projected growth, improvement and reimbursement fee cost bases, and then we'll look at comparisons to other jurisdictions, and then we'll talk next steps. So to give you a quick overview of what SDCs are and what they aren't, this is our standard slide here that gives you a good sense of that. They are one-time charges paid at the time of development. They're available for the five major utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and in tonight's case, parks. They're for capital only, both in their calculation and their use, which means they're not available for operations and maintenance, that kind of thing, ongoing expenses. They include both existing and future infrastructure cost components, and we'll get into what that means a little bit later on with this analysis. And finally, they are for system facilities, not for local facilities. So in the case of streets, for instance, we're not paying for local roads using SDCs, we're paying for collectors and arterials. And all of this is laid out very well in Oregon State Law, ORS 223-297-2316, really gives us a solid framework through which to focus our analysis, making sure that the city's not exposed to any sort of legal jeopardy for this, this type of analysis. So the major components, the two major pillars of an SDC are the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee. The reimbursement fee component, that calculates the value of existing capacity in already-developed projects. So if there is, for instance, a park that is at 70% capacity, then that park can take on 30% more capacity, and it can take on the capacity needed for additional residential and employment expansion in the city. In an improvement fee, those costs are calculated based on the project cost and its eligibility, and we'll get into what that means a little bit later. Both of those eligible costs are divided by growth and system demand, which typically means residents or dwelling units, in this case it will also mean employees, and that results in your system development charge. And of course, we'll get you into details in a minute. Your current Parks SDC, as it stands, is $7,349 per dwelling unit of a single-family detached. And that kind of goes further and further down as you go into more dense housing, so multifamily there, $5,645 per unit. And then for employment uses, we tend to not look at those at a per-unit basis, so much as a 1,000 square feet basis. So for instance, office is currently paying $729 per 1,000 square feet of office space, and on down, same situation. So food, food service, or food service shopping center, $1,689 per 1,000 square feet, retail, $3,500 per 1,000 square feet, and on and on. So there's your existing SDCs. I'll hand it over to Zek really quickly to let you know what we're looking at for your new SDCs.
All right, thank you, Tim. So this slide here summarizes the full calculated SDC. Starting at the top here, we have this section which describes the cost basis. We have the improvement fee cost basis at 74 million, really. Reimbursement fee, about 2.4 million, and compliance costs at 3.8 million.
Excuse me, just a second. Kit, there's a message box on there that's hiding some of these numbers. Can we get rid of that?
Oh. I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's a message box on one of your computers that is actually hiding some of the data on the graph, is that?
Am I sharing? Let me see here.
Oh.
I'm gonna try stopping sharing, and I'll reshare my screen. See if that works. Is that looking better?
No, it's still on your screen.
It might be on our end, is it on our end, Zoe?
It is on our end.
It's all on our end.
I don't see it. Yeah, I don't see it either.
We don't see it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think we took care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Definitely want to see the numbers on a presentation like this. So yeah, so at the top, like I was saying, we have the cost basis, improvement, reimbursement, and compliance, and they add up to a total of just shy of 80 million. By the way, compliance costs, those are costs for calculating the methodology and administering the SDC program in general. That cost basis of just shy of 80 million gets divided by the growth in residential equivalents of 8,626, to get the calculated SDC per residential equivalent year of $9,242. You might be wondering what a residential equivalent is, and I'll tell you in a second. That charge per residential equivalent gets applied to all of your land uses based on the expected occupancy of those land uses. So for example, for a single-family dwelling unit, it's like, something like 2.7 people, I think, $25,000 per single-family dwelling unit is the calculated charge there. However, this table here shows the calculated maximum SDC, which you're not obligated to charge, you can charge anything up to the maximum SDC. So the city staff has recommended a lower charge of $5,167 per residential equivalent, which just so happens to work out to be $14,000 for a single-family residence. That's the recommended charge. The rest of the slides I'm about to show you will be demonstrating the maximum charge, because we have to do the math to basically prove that that is the legal maximum, and you can charge anything up to that. But just remember that you can set anything below the maximum, and the city staff has recommended a charge of $14,000 for a single-family residence. Okay, so first up, we're going to talk about the denominator of the SDC calculation, which is residential equivalents. So a residential equivalent is a way of basically measuring demand between both residential occupants and employees that are added by your non-residential land uses. We have to figure out a way to kind of equate those so that we have one denominator of growth to calculate the SDC with. The way we do that is we look at commuting patterns in Wilsonville, and our data is from 2019, it's the most recent data we had available, and we look at what types of people work in Wilsonville and where they live. So for example, there are, in 2019, 17,000 people who work inside Wilsonville but live outside Wilsonville. So for example, that group of people will have demand during their work hours, but they will go home after work, and they will have no parks demand when they're at home. So those two types of demand, when you're at home, is called residential demand, and when you're at work, is called non-residential demand. So what we've done here is we've figured out how many different types of people there are in each group, and then we assign hours to those people. So if you work in the city of Wilsonville, then you get, we assume, eight hours per workday, and we assume that one of those hours you could be using the park system potentially. If you're not working, then you get potentially a full 16 hours per day of parks usage, and this is a measure of maximum demand, not actual demand. So long story short, we figure out how many people there are in each category, and we assign hours, both residential and non-residential, to each category people, and we multiply those numbers to get the total residential hours per week and the total non-residential hours per week. And dividing one by the other gives us the residents per employee down here at the bottom, .05. So very long story short, what that means is that on average, 20 additional employees in Wilsonville equals the demand of one resident. So they have much less demand than a resident, but it is present. Next up here, so having done all that work to establish the non-residential equivalency factor, now we can figure out the full denominator of the SDC. So at the top here is the population estimates from 2021 through 2036, and that's from the Parks Master Plan. And below that is the estimate of employees. Multiplying those employees by the .05 equivalency factor we just calculated gives us the residential equivalent employees here. So now we have growth in population of 8,276, plus growth in residential equivalent employees of 350. That gives us a total growth in residential equivalents of 8,626. That is the denominator of the SDC calculation that you saw a couple slides back. So having figured out the denominator, now we can start working on the numerator, and we're going to start by looking at the improvement fee. So I'll try to go quickly through this. Basically, because you can set different standards for parks, how many parks you have per acre, for example, we do what's called the level of service calculation to figure out how much parks the city is planning to add, and use that as the standard for SDC purposes. So using parks in natural areas as an example, we measure that in terms of acres, and in 2021, there were 247.94 acres in the city of Wilsonville. That works out to be acres per 1,000 residents of 9.81. That's the current level of service standard. Once you finish the project list, you're actually going to have a net decrease in the number of acres, because some of them will be converted into trail miles or other uses, which means that by 2036, combined with population growth and with that conversion of acres into trail miles, we will have a level of service of 7.36 acres per 1,000 residents. So that's a lower level of service than we currently have. That means that if we were to take that future level of service of 7.36 acres per 1,000 residents, and we applied it to today's population, we would only need 186 acres today to meet that level of service, which means that when we're measured by our future level of service, we're already meeting our needs, and in fact, we're surpassing them by quite a bit. Because we're meeting our needs, that means that any future park acre projects in the project list will be going towards growth, not for existing residents. And not only that, but because we already are meeting our needs and surpassing them, we have some reimbursable acres, 61.89, you can see here, that we can include in the reimbursement fee later on. But for improvement fee sake, what we're looking at here is this eligibility column. But for improvement fee sake, what we're looking at here is this eligibility column, and we can see that we've calculated 100% eligibility for those acres of parks and natural areas and the miles of trail. So next up, we can start applying those eligibility factors to the project list. Here are a list, here's a list of all of the expansion projects that the city of Wilsonville is planning to build between now and 2036. Focusing on the numbers here, we have a total project cost in this white column of $67.9 million. All of these park acres or all of these projects add park acres or trail miles, so they all get 100% eligibility in the SDC calculation. There's also a second type of project, which doesn't add trail miles or park acres, and that's what we call the infill projects. These projects either add or replace amenities on your existing park system, and because you already have that park available, we can't do a level of service calculation on that. Instead, what we assume is that any amenities that are new and being added to your existing park system will be shared proportionally between existing and future users. They'll be using them equally is what that means. And so we assign the proportional share of those projects to growth, which is just shy of 25% in this case. So multiplying those eligible projects by 25% gives us the SDC eligible column on the far right, and that works out to be 8.6 million of SDC eligible costs. So when we combine that with the expansion list, that gives us a total cost basis of $76.5 million for the improvement fee. And then a much quicker calculation here is the reimbursement fee, which looks at your existing facilities and what you have available for growth. So in this first column here, you can see the inventory of your parks and natural areas and your miles of trail. And then the next column there, you can see the historical expenditures that Wilsonville has spent on those facilities. When we calculate that, divided by the inventory, that gives us an investment per unit. So for example, for parks and natural areas, that's $38,000 per acre. We know from our level of service calculation a couple slides back that we have 61.89 reimbursable acres of park and natural areas. So multiplying that by that 38,000 factor gives us the reimbursable amount on the far right here of 2.4 million. And we have a little bit, just a smidgen of reimbursable trail miles as well, so we have a total reimbursable amount of 2.39 million. Really quickly, before I take you to the final calculation again, we have to make one adjustment to the improvement fee. We have to remove the current improvement fee fund balance, which is just shy of $3 million. And the reason we do that is to make sure we're not double counting for projects that were on your last SDC project list that didn't get finished but still had funds collected for them that then got carried over to the existing project list. This is a conservative assumption we're making, and we're just going to remove that fund balance to avoid any double counting. And then finally, here's the calculated SDC once again, now that we've talked about each and every element of this calculation. So at the top here, we have the improvement fee, 73.5, reimbursement fee, 2.39, compliance costs, 3.79, for a total cost basis of just shy of $80 million. Divided by the growth, we get a SDC per residential equivalent of $9,242. And you can see that applied to your land leases below. And once again, I'll remind you that the city staff is recommending a lower charge of $5,167 per residential equivalent. And then just for completeness sake, we also have included this slide, which shows you what the SDC would be for non-residential land uses. And don't worry, I won't read this one to you, but all this says is that per 1,000 square feet, how many employees are you expected to have for each different land use? And we apply that per residential equivalent charge or per employee equivalent, .05 times the SDC times the expected employee for 1,000 square feet, and that gives us a charge per 1,000 square feet for all of your non-residential land uses. And then lastly, for my part of the slides here, we have a quick comparison here. At the far left is Wilsonville's existing SDC per single-family dwelling unit, and then we have a bunch of comparable jurisdictions in green. At the far right is the maximum charge that we just calculated, and then right in the middle there is the staff recommendation for the single-family residential SDC. And I'll turn it back over to Tim to finish off.
Great work, Zach, thank you. So the next steps on this project are, we'll take your feedback tonight, edit the analysis as needed, and then we'll move on to the public hearing, the final public hearing for this system development charge, which we'll bring back in front of you for your final approval. We'll consider some implementation options there, including timing and phasing, adopt the SDC, and finally, the staff is recommending an implementation date of January 1st, 2024, just to make sure that we're not inducing a shock to the development system. And then finally, we'll recommend that the city use a cost index such as the Engineering News and Report Construction Cost Index to make sure that the SDC stays current with current construction cost rates. And that, I believe, is it for our slideshow, so at that point, let's take any questions that the council may have.
Counselor Linville.
This is a very complicated analysis, and I don't by any means propose that I understand it all, but I'm, my question is, I think in the beginning you talked about the cost basis and that at the current time, I believe you indicated that our inventory is exceeds for the population, our current, we have more acres for the population that we have currently. Did I hear you say that correctly?
So what I mean by this is that we have, by the end of the planning period, we will have fewer acres per 1,000 residents than we do now, which means that by corollary, we have more acres now than we need to serve our targets for the future level of service.
Right, and I'm wondering, where was that, was that subtracted somewhere in the calculation? So we ended up with fewer acres in the future?
Yeah, so basically, we looked at level of service in four different ways, and I'm just showing you one of them, but this method that I'm showing you is basically consolidating all of your park acres into one unit, which is just acres. We don't care if it's a community park or an open space acre or whatever else. And so when you do that consolidation, you actually see a net decrease in the number of acres, and that's because we're converting some of those acres into trail miles. So luckily, staff had really good data about how many, the width of the trail miles and how much would be used up from their current stock of park acres. And so that's why you see a net decrease. Now, sometimes that means that you're also converting what you currently have, so maybe you have an undeveloped plot of land, you're converting that into a developed park, and that would not show up here because it's a conversion, it's not an addition of acres, it's just a conversion from one use to another. And so that's why we, on the whole, are seeing a net decrease in the number of acres.
Another way to, another way to say that, if I may jump in, is the city's forecasted to grow a little bit faster than it adds acres to the park system. So that, that level of service, while it goes down a little bit, the city is still adding acres and miles of trail by executing that capital plan. It's just that that, that level of service calculation, for the purposes of this math, goes down a little bit and shows you have technically, surplus is a bad word, but against that future level of service, you have a reimbursable quantity of parks right now. I hope that helped.
I'm just wondering in these charts and in the calculations, where we show that surplus? Do we show it anyplace?
Yes, ma'am. Right on this, on this slide is where it's that reimbursable quantity number in the bottom right of that lower table, almost 62 acres of parks and a little over a mile of trail. And further on in the analysis, Zach calculates the dollar amount of those reimbursable quantities, and they become the basis of the reimbursement fee. That was that between $2 and $3 million number.
Okay. Okay, and then I had one other question, and that was in the description that is on, I think it's page 14 of your report, where it's, it's, it's Roman numeral 2.8.3, growth and demand. And I'm just trying to understand the numbers. So it, it says the current demand for parks facilities is 26,350 residential equivalents, which I understand, and that number shows down in the growth demand chart in exhibit But then I don't understand or see where the 1,070 residential equivalents, where is that number, where does that number come from?
Okay, so that, if you'll notice, is the employees. We have employees just above this residential equivalents, $20,000. That number multiplied by the residents per employee factor back here, .05, is equal to the residential equivalent employees.
Okay, so that takes into, that takes into account employees that are residents as well as employees that are non-residents. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly, and specifically, we're equating their demand to a resident by basically discounting the amount of time they have to access the park system because, like I said, we only assumed that they had one hour during work days to access the park system. So basically, we're trying to figure out how much that demand is relative to a resident.
And is that formula that you use, is that kind of the standard with 16 hours per weekend days and eight hours for weekdays for residents? Is that the standard that's used across all of these analyses?
John, probably most, yeah. We can't speak for all of them, but it is definitely a standard approach.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for that comprehensive report. As you went through it, it all made sense to me, but because I'm not familiar with all the parks and all the planning that were in town, I just, I put trust in the staff and these consultants that you're doing a good job. The numbers look like they're all lining up to me.
That's good, okay, thank you. If you could go to section 2C on page, or the page with exhibit 2.9, because you're page 11, could you just once again describe how the reimbursement fee is applied? How does that, how is that noted? How does that come into use for current residents? And how does it, how would they notice it? Or is it really only going to be noticed after new parks are brought in and that is incorporated into the new parks?
So I can, yeah, and Zach, maybe you could show the full calculation table, if you would, yeah. So if you'll notice, near the top of the table here, it shows the reimbursement fee cost basis of almost $2.4 million. We divided by that growth in residential equivalents to calculate the reimbursement fee per residential equivalent of $277. So it's, it's kind of buried in the total SDC, but if the city tracks that money separately as it comes in, which is a recommendation that you track reimbursement fee money separately from improvement fee money, then the nice thing about reimbursement fee dollars is you can spend them on non-growth-related capital projects. So the portions of those projects that are not improvement fee eligible that you saw on, on previous slides, you can use the reimbursement fee proceeds for those, those remaining project costs. Now, it's obvious, it's comparatively a really small number, but it does, it does help. That's how the existing population is benefited by the reimbursement fee. This money comes in from new development, and it can be used to, to help pay for that capital project list.
So I'm, I'm wondering here if we, once we're finished with questions with the consultants, if we'll have an opportunity to maybe talk to, ask some questions of staff? We can, we can do that now? Now, right? Any questions?
Sure.
Okay, well, it seemed to me at our last discussion about this, that we were either going to have, or I guess it's really a question, were we, were we or are we going to have conversations with developers about this? And I thought that we had talked about that that was going to happen.
Great question, yes. So our first work session was June 5th. On June 14th, we had a community open house where we sent, and we sent out an email invite to all of our known developers in the area and the Portland Home Builders Association, inviting folks to that, anybody that would be interested. We had two people in person and two people attend virtually, and there were a few questions asked, but no concerns or real opposition to the way we were going, so really, that's, that's about it as far as the, the feedback and how we integrated it into this next round. You know, that was part of the public outreach process, and that, that was what we heard back. I do also want to circle back to a question you had during the first work session, Counselor Linville, and that was about the French Berry, French Prairie Road Pathway project that you had asked, because you didn't see it on this list, and then I was thinking this, but I wasn't quite sure, so I didn't say anything last time, I wanted to confirm. That project is on the transportation, on the transportation system plan, so it's not part of, you wouldn't see it on a park SDC project list, so I just wanted to circle back with you and let you know, because it's not in a park or on a park property or even adjacent to a park, it would be part of a trans system, transition, transportation system plan project. So that is on a list somewhere, but not a park SDC list.
Is that inside sharp enough too, or just along Miley Road? No, it's French Prairie, inside.
French Prairie.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering why, because I think originally it was part of the advisory committee discussion.
And they added, yeah, it was added to the Parks Bond Advisory, that list, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a Parks project, it's just to kind of...
It's not an SDC eligible, so it wouldn't be in the Parks Master Plan. It's a transportation project, but you can throw anything in a geo bond.
So to clarify, am I hearing, it was, it was part of that master plan discussion, but it has not been funded?
No, it's in our transportation system plan. It was part of the Parks Bond Task Force.
Task Force Work.
Final, yeah, final project recommended list. And the whole idea behind, behind that discussion and process was, we wanted to give something for every kind of geographic area of the city to give people a reason to say yes to the bond. So we kind of, we picked a few from here and there, but they were, by and large, most of those projects, probably 98% of them were Parks projects.
And that bond, just to confirm, has not been put to the voters?
No, the timing was, we had it all queued up, we were getting ready to make the recommendation, and then COVID hit.
Okay, so I had a question about, or just Mr. Almerman, what you were talking about with the open house with the developers on the 14th, and I remember that you, you did not hear from them that they wanted these reduced necessarily, and as I recall, they weren't asking... weren't asking for SDCs to be reduced?
No, we didn't hear anything like that. I think one person there was relieved when they asked the question, what would this fee adjustment mean to their existing infrastructure? And the answer to that is nothing, because this is just for new development. So they were, seemed very relieved when we answered, told them that.
And then, I just had a conversation with a person who doesn't build homes here currently, but did for many years. And I understood that, we were just talking about this, that he seemed to confirm what you had reported from that open house, that there's a value as a builder in knowing what amenities are going to be available around the house, which helps with sale of the products.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that was a really interesting revelation. Their biggest thing is, they have a lot of costs going into it, and they want to have a good competitive product to be able to sell that competes well against all other products.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've seen that, of course, in the Villebois area, where you have those regional parks being constructed, along with the neighborhoods. And that, as you said, helps them sell the homes. Because people see those finished parks, or at least planned parks, and they want to be...
And we do have a lot of demand for more parks.
Yeah.
And so next steps will be...
Yes, one more question.
Sure. This is probably to the city manager. It's been a while since we've addressed parks SDCs, correct?
It's been a long time.
Since 2008, which is why we're here.
Okay. And it seems to me that with the plans to build Villebois, would have been an ideal situation for us to at least do an increment at that point. What was, why was it that we didn't kind of jump on that?
Those projects were all tied to urban renewal, so they were funded a little bit differently. There was some SDC funds in those projects, but a lot of those were done through development agreements, is my understanding. A lot of the regional parks were built by the developers, paid for by the developers, with the agreement that the city would maintain them after five years.
Yeah. And the vast majority of those, the SDC component was that essentially, they didn't have to pay their SDC, their park SDC, in lieu of paying the fee and not building the park, so.
There's a credit.
And the whole idea behind that is that the private sector can deliver those projects a lot cheaper than we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so, next steps, if you could just, if any, you know, I was going to ask about next steps also, just to see, after you described those, if that brings up any other questions for the councilors when we hear what's next? How does that satisfy our curiosity here?
Yeah, they mentioned, the consultants mentioned a little bit in their presentation, but basically, we have the August 21 public hearing scheduled. And then, after that, we're looking at, you know, adoption and implementation. And our department met with Community Development Department, and, because those folks work, you know, very closely with builders and developers in the area, to get a sense of what a timeline for implementation would look like, so that we're not catching anybody off guard. And that was when we came up with the recommendation of January 1, 2024, as an implementation date for the Parks SDC update.
Typically, want to give as much lead time as possible to developers, so that if they're planning on submitting building permits for a residential or whatever, they could make that as part of their business decision as to whether this is such a significant cost increase for them, they could get it in early, so they would be grandfathered under the old fee.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Well, I just have a comment. And, you know, it's an interesting tension that we deal with, I think. And I just want to recognize that it's there. Because on the one hand, we are talking about affordable housing. And we wholeheartedly believe that and buy into that. And the other side, we recognize that it costs money to provide the kinds of services and livability that we need in the city. So it is a tension, and I appreciate that the staff have looked at these numbers and really tried to make things as more realistic, or keep all of those things in mind as we look at what the, you know, the possibilities are for, you know, what we could charge if we really went forward. But I just wanted to recognize that we feel that, we recognize that tension.
And I will say, of all the infrastructure we charge SDCs for, this is the one where you have a lot more discretion. When it comes to sewer, water, and streets, it becomes more problematic in terms of trying to reduce that SDC amount, because that's all hard infrastructure that you have to have.
And so, with that, when you had just described how the development agreements, development agreement plan could allow the private sector to build the parks, does this structure still leave us open to that? In terms of keeping park construction reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, I will say yes, but you know, there's a legal...
Yeah, our code allows for the types of development agreements that where a developer would build, and they would get SDC credits that apply to their building permits.
And I want to recognize, our Parks Department just did some very affordable implementation of parks with the Dog Park, and the Nature Park won a big award, and flabbergasted some other cities at how affordably they did that. So I really appreciate the ingenuity and thinking on how we balance these things, because there's a really wide range of, a really long road to get to affordable these days for everybody. Thank you.
Well said, Mayor.
Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to our second and last item for the work session, which is the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study with Mr. Lorenzen.
Okay. Mayor and Council, excuse me, good evening. I'm Matt Lorenzen, Economic Development Manager. Pleased to be here again to speak with you about this project, the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study. I last briefed the Council on June 19. And we left off basically right here, where we were talking about the timeline for this project. At that point in time, we were targeting the November election cycle as the sort of end of this project and the culmination of the work, and what we hoped would be an advisory vote, where the people of Wilsonville said that they supported the concept of a new urban renewal area to support redevelopment and new development within the Town Center planning area. We were right on course, and it was sort of a breakneck pace, very truncated schedule, but what we felt was doable when we began the project. But as we got into the analysis with our task force and with our consultants, it became clear that our ambitious timeline was perhaps a little bit too ambitious. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that. But I'm here to discuss with you tonight, an alternative timeline, and why we feel like it's in the best interest of everyone. We discussed in last meeting this boundary option. We're still working with this boundary option, but may look at an alternative. And again, this requires time to explore options. We talked about a range of financial forecasts for what the financial capacity could be for this new potential urban renewal area. And there is a wide range that our consultants have started us with. You can see this capacity that's highlighted. At the low end, $18.5 million of debt capacity versus $80 million on the high end. That's, of course, a huge range. But that's a starting point. And where we go from there is to do a deeper dive into the development assumptions. In other words, if we look into the crystal ball, but not just the crystal ball, if we put our thinking caps on, we look at the allowable land uses within the Town Center area, per the Town Center Plan, and the zoning and Development Code that now guides development. If we look at absorption rates, what the market can reasonably absorb as new product is brought online. As we look at opportunity sites that may already be underutilized or vacant, as we just take a step, that thoughtful step, to try and quantify how and where and when redevelopment and new development might occur within the planning area. That's how we can bring this $18 million to $80 million range much closer together. And as we started to get into that analysis, it became clear that we needed a much more, rather than trying to come up with some formula that we could plug into an Excel spreadsheet, for example, to apply to all parcels within the planning area, it started to become clear that we really needed to look at this almost on a parcel-by-parcel basis, in order to be able to be as accurate as possible with this financial projection. So I'm here tonight, like I said, to talk about a revised timeline and tell you about what we need time for. And so I'll begin with the thought I was just beginning with. We need a careful, nuanced, and accurate assessment of the development assumptions. Again, that's when and where development is most likely to occur, and what that product may be. I mentioned that we may, with now a little bit more time, explore a boundary alternative. And at this point in time, we don't necessarily have anything specific in mind, but our task force meeting has had some discussion about potentially including some property on the west side of I-5, with the argument that those properties would be beneficiaries of the urban renewal program, in that employees and residents would be able to move back and forth more freely across I-5. In addition to the benefit that they would receive, the assessed value of those properties would also be able to in turn contribute toward the tax increment that the urban renewal area generates. So this is all conceptual right now, but it's, again, part of that analysis that we still need to do. In addition to these development assumptions, it also became more and more clear that we needed more time to spend on the project list and the prioritization of those projects on the list. We also heard from Council on our June meeting, that there was interest in, for example, trying to include a program or a project that would facilitate the redevelopment of the Fries property, for example. We've heard that parking is very important, and so we want to fully explore what a solution or solutions could be. And that could come in the form of a structured parking, which I think has been the concept that's been mainly circulated up to this point. But if we look at other communities, for example, I think a lot of folks are familiar with downtown Lake Oswego, where parking has been integrated into development and decentralized. And so that's a concept that we want to spend some time on as well. Parking structures are incredibly expensive, and if too far away from the destinations people are trying to visit, may go unutilized. And so we really want to explore how parking fits into an urban renewal program, and include that into our projections as well. And then, finally, one of the things that we were really sacrificing with such a truncated schedule was an effective communications plan. If we're going to go and consult the electorate and ask for their buy-in for this important plan moving into the future, we want to be able to effectively communicate what the plan is, and so that people feel comfortable with what we're proposing. We would have still done that, but probably not as effectively as we can now with more time. And then finally, with the development of ballot language, of course, that is something that we want to get right. Fortunately, Wilsonville has been successful historically with the ballot language that's been used, and we'll certainly use that as a model. But we would like the legal department to vet the language that's developed, and to make sure, again, that that is going to give us the highest probability of getting the support of the people for a new urban renewal area. So I'll just briefly talk to you about what this new timeline looks like with some major landmarks, and then conclude. So we've already completed a few of these steps, and you see that noted here. Our next task force meeting, we're projecting will be about mid-August. So that gives us a month from today, approximately, to really dig into those development assumptions, and to do what statute calls the documentation of blight, to just make sure that we have a very clear articulation of what the conditions are within Town Center that we are trying to solve with an urban renewal area. I'll be back to brief you again in September on where we've landed. So that $18 to $80 million range should be much narrower by the time I come back in September, and we can talk more at that point in time. We'll have two more meetings of the task force to work on that project piece. What are the projects? What are the priorities of those projects? And when are those projects likely to be completed based on the realization of tax increment as it comes in? And then, an additional meeting to review with the task force what the staff has developed for a communications plan and draft ballot language, and make sure that we get their input and support on that piece. At the end of this calendar year, I'll bring all of that information back, what the communications plan is, and what the draft ballot language looks like, and get any final input from the Council before we then spend the rest of the winter and spring executing on that communications plan, and taking this feasibility study work and findings, and bringing that out, that information out into the community in any number of ways. I've started to talk with Bill Evans about how we might do that. And we have, of course, a lot of different options, from online platforms, direct mailings, social media, the Boons Ferry Messenger, I think you know the list. But we plan on utilizing as many of these methods as possible to make sure that we get the message out and do it well. On February 5, we anticipate that you'll have the opportunity to bless final ballot language. And it's important that we do that a little bit later in this process, because from that point forward, then, anything that we communicate out into the community has to be reviewed by the Secretary of State. And that's just part of elections law. We would soon thereafter submit the ballot title to Clackamas County Elections for the vote, which will take place on May 21. And then, provided we are successful and meet these landmark goals, we'd be looking then to implement a plan between June and August. And that should be pretty doable, because most of this technical work that we're doing now will simply just be compiled into a document and then presented for adoption. There's not a lot of additional work that has to be done after the advisory vote is complete, and after the feasibility study is already complete. So if there are questions, I'd love to answer those. But I want to just end on the note of, or the question, what do we lose by extending this timeline, or do we lose out on anything? And the answer is no, actually. There was some stress when we started to realize that our timeline was not entirely realistic, and that we needed to pivot. But two of the things that we had in mind were, if we moved to May, would we lose the increment that's generated annually by a simple 3% appreciation of assessed value, which you can usually count on year to year, barring any crazy economic circumstances, macroeconomic circumstances? barring any crazy economic circumstances, macroeconomic circumstances? We found, after talking with our consultants, that we would not lose that, that the frozen base that we would still be working with, whether we have a November election or a May election, the frozen base would still be based on January 2023 values. And that leads me to my second point. There is a development application in for review right now in the Town Center area, and if that were to be approved by planning and proceed to construction, we also were mindful that if we delayed the implementation of urban renewal, we might lose the increment that that project generates. But we, again, found that the frozen base would be locked in January 2023 assessed values, and so we would not lose out on that opportunity. So we have much to gain by extending this timeline and really nothing to lose. And so that's why we've made this decision and hope that you will also support it, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Matt. That was a great, I'm very supportive of the change in the timeline and appreciate that it's going to be a more thoughtful process and probably more realistic, so I appreciate that. My question is, on the new timeline, the January through May execute the communications plan, and I'm just wondering, in January, what would be communicated there before the council has opportunity to consider the final ballot language? What would be done in January? Would it then, would it be input that might inform the ballot language? Or what would we be trying to do during that period of time?
Yeah, I don't think we would be communicating out, here's what you can expect to see on the May ballot. What we would be doing is frankly, what we've already begun doing, and that is to start to make sure the community is aware of the success that Wilsonville has had with urban renewal and why it is an effective public finance tool, to sort of plant those seeds and to just bring awareness, because there is a lot of misunderstanding and in some cases misinformation around tax increment finance, and so a lot of the messaging would really just be about awareness, much more so than trying to promote any specific ballot title.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, thank you for your report. So if we have a vote in May, that's like a special election, so fewer voters, is that going to impact the results? Do you think that would?
It's a good question. It wouldn't be a special, special election, per se, but you're right, it is off like the presidential cycle, for example, or the major November cycle. There usually is lower voter turnout in May versus November. The voters tend to be more informed and more active voters as well, and that's just something that we'll need to keep in mind. But in June, you heard a lot from me that evening, and one of the things that we talked about was the history and genesis of the Year 2000 Urban Renewal Plan. And interestingly, when they went for their first attempt to pass a ballot measure, it was on a November cycle and it failed. When they went back to voters, it was on a May cycle and it succeeded. Whether or not that's indicative of the outcome, we'll have, I don't know, but I guess that just goes to show that we shouldn't assume anything, whether that's a negative or a positive outcome based on just November versus May, but it is something we'll want to consider for sure.
So if we have a vote in May, does, what do we need to get it to be passed? Is it a percentage of the people that do vote, or is it a certain count of voters?
It's an advisory vote, so you would just look at the results as a council and determine whether, you're not bound by it in any way. The last one we went out for was on the TIF zone, and that was also a special election, and that, I think that was like sixty-four percent, I can't remember the exact, but people voted in favor of the TIF zones.
So the citizens vote as part of the election in May, and then that is brought to city council as input of what the citizens are thinking, and then the city council makes the determination?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
It's not binding in any way, although if you're going to put it out for a vote and it's like thirty percent to seventy no, then you would obviously want to have a conversation about that. So, and it is a primary election, so it will be pretty heavily voted because it is a general election year, so I think you'll get the same, you'll get a lot better turnout than you would on a non-general election year in a primary or any special election.
Got it. Well, thank you. I have another comment. You really piqued my interest when you said, when you talked about expanding the boundary on the western side, because at first I was thinking, it really makes sense to just contain it right where the shopping center is, but when you brought up that idea, I'd really like to hear more about that because it makes sense to me just initially, because we have the smart transit center over there, and we're trying to build the connection with the bridge, pedestrian bicycle bridge, and so there are properties that are going to be economically tied to the Town Center. So that makes sense to me to at least study those properties as being part of this project.
Thank you for that input, and I'll be sure to bring that up at our next task force meeting, that there's interest from the council on that topic. I think we're going to have that conversation regardless, but it's definitely great to let them know that the council also is interested in that piece. Notably, the two properties that would be immediately adjacent to I-5 and to the pedestrian bridge are the Rite Aid Distribution Center and what's called the Patent Business Center. Rite Aid is currently occupied, of course, but it's, that property is being marketed right now for a new tenant. And so conceivably, there could be improvements to that, substantial improvements to that very large building in the not-too-distant future. That assessed value and the increment associated with it could be beneficiary to this Town Center plan. And then the same thing could be said for the Patent Business Center. That's office product, and so that's maybe less likely to have major capital expenditures associated with it, similar to a manufacturing-type facility, but the market does creative things in repurposing real estate, and so we don't know what will happen there.
All right, thank you. And Matt, in reading our Urban Renewal Strategic Plan again, I just wanted to, you know, ask if you could just confirm how we just closed the Year 2000 Plan, which opens up this opportunity. Can you just recap that a little bit?
Absolutely. So there are two things that Oregon Revised Statutes places limitations on with regard to how cities use urban renewal, and it's the percentage of acreage and the percentage of assessed value in a city. It can be, in a city of Wilsonville's size, it cannot be more than twenty-five percent of either. From an assessed value standpoint, we're far, far under the cap. From an acreage standpoint, we're running pretty close to that twenty-five percent limitation. So with the Year 2000 Plan being newly retired...
Which is one of our urban renewal districts, just for our listeners.
Yes, thank you, yes. One of our existing urban renewal areas, the Year 2000 Plan, has just been closed, and so that acreage no longer counts against our total. The West Side Plan, another urban renewal area, is scheduled to close this next fiscal, or excuse me, this current fiscal year, but June 30th of 2024, and that will free up yet additional acreage.
And confirming that urban renewal is not a tax.
That's right. We're actually running a full-page highlight of the closure of the Year 2000 Urban Renewal Area in the next issue of the Boons Ferry Messenger, and one of the key points there is that urban renewal is not a new tax and it does not increase property taxes. It's a division of taxes. So in other words, it's not, it's not making the pie bigger, it's splitting the pie up differently and allocating some pieces of those pies specifically to urban renewal projects.
And if we look at the past projects, the Year 2000 Plan or District, for example, we see that our assessed property value started at forty-four million in 1992 as the original frozen base, and the current assessed value of that same acreage is now five hundred and fifty point five million.
That's right.
So can you just, you know, round it off by just talking about what does that mean to people living in Wilsonville?
Yeah, when we adjusted for inflation using CPI, we find that the assessed value within the Year 2000 boundary area increased by basically eight hundred percent, or eight times what it was at the time the plan was created, and that's adjusted for inflation. So that's not, that's not just saying that we're baking inflation into it and trying to call that growth, that's accounting for inflation. And that happens by the city investing in infrastructure that enables the development to occur, and that development is what leads to the increased tax base.
Which pays for services and parks.
Absolutely, and the great thing about Town Center, and to maybe even contrast a little bit with the Year 2000, Year 2000 Plan was largely facilitating development in areas that were at that time undeveloped. With the Town Center planning area, we're talking about making the highest and best use of land that's already within the city and already developed, but instead of having, say, one dollar in tax value per unit of land, we could make it five or ten. It's really maximizing the capacity of that land. So for example, the vast parking lots that exist within Town Center, instead of that just being blank space, that could be tax-generating improvements.
And we've already lived the experience of seeing how Town Center is not suddenly transforming itself.
Yes, that's fair to say.
This is one of the few available tools, if we do choose to use it, to help perhaps get that going.
Right, the recently adopted Town Center Funding Plan definitely identified some sources of funding that would pay for a good chunk of these infrastructure projects, but there's still a very sizable gap that needs to be filled, and the conclusion of that report is that urban renewal is basically the one option we have in terms of anything outside of a bond measure, which would increase taxes. This is the option that we have to explore to close that gap in order to build these projects.
And then in the studies that the Urban Renewal Task Force is doing, I assume you're going to be looking at, because we have a very good history of operating urban renewal districts in Wilsonville. That isn't the case everywhere, but the way that it's been used here has been pretty well-regarded. So in this study, will you be looking at what is needed to get a really good result in this potential use of it?
Absolutely, and that's part of the project prioritization exercise. We are likely to be in a situation, just as they were in 1990 when they adopted the Year 2000 Plan, where they have a list of projects that's this long that they desire, but it needs to be three-quarters that size or some other fraction of it. And so the task force and the council in time will be informing and prioritizing those projects to focus on those that will really be the ones to facilitate and support new development. And that new development is what leads to that substantial tax base growth.
Well, because you have, one of the things that I am also enthused about is the makeup of the Urban Renewal Task Force with people from the development community, Chamber of Commerce, residents, businesses, and so forth, so that we have a good, and also our services in our area in schools, right? We have somebody from the school district?
Yeah, we tried to involve as many of the taxing districts as we can, but most especially those that are most impacted, and those include the fire district, the school district, the community college, and the city itself are the largest taxing districts and most impacted by urban renewal. And so, yes, they have a seat at the table, as you mentioned, local businesses, residents, and the development community as well, who help us in, you know, you mentioned prioritizing those projects that are going to lead to the most positive outcome possible. The development community, the ones that are actually building these private projects, are the ones that can really guide us and have provided great input on, this project is one that we would really, that we feel would support the feasibility of our private development project. This one, maybe not so much.
Go ahead.
And I think we, I think we can't miss the point as well, that although the urban renewal project will, is anticipated to increase a tax increment, and this is a benefit for the city, what we're doing is we are creating an environment, we are creating that Town Center Plan and implementing it, which I think a lot of our citizens have had input into for quite a long time and wondering, when is it going to ever happen? So it isn't just a financial issue, it's also a quality of life, I think, issue.
Yeah, and I appreciate that point. I mean, we talk about metrics when we're talking about whether or not a plan has been successful, and we often measure that in dollars and cents, but urban renewal, as it's called after all, is about revitalization. And so, yes, there's a quantifiable and a qualitative aspect of this, for sure.
All right, well, thank you. So looking at your, all of our materials here, you wanted some council direction. I think you've heard from a lot of us, I'll just reiterate that I think this is a good plan, and I, the only comment I would make is, on the communication timing, can that start even sooner? It feels like you, and you do have something coming out in Boons Ferry Messenger, you said?
Right.
So I think the more communication, the better, because this is a complicated tool.
Absolutely, and, let's see here, trying to look at my schedule. Yeah, so we're looking at developing a communications plan. Yes, point well taken. I guess I'll just note that we have spoken with the spokesman about doing some work on this piece, whether that's a guest column that the city writes or something that they formally write up about the Year 2000 Plan and about urban renewal generally. We have this full-page spread in the Boons Ferry Messenger in the next issue. So while those components won't, I guess, be part of this communications plan that we're going to be developing over the coming months, we're still trying to, yes, plant seeds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I give you what you need?
Absolutely. Really just wanted to make sure that there was not any broad consensus among council members that this was the wrong path to go down.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the work session, and I will convene a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for City of Wilsonville, starting at 6:24 PM. Calling to order a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, will the agency recorder please call the roll?
Member Linville?
Here.
Member Barry?
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
And members Oquervale and Dunwell are excused.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three to zero. And this is our time for citizen input. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency on items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and Urban Renewal Agency will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible. during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And you can use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know if you'd like to provide comments. Do we have anyone waiting to make comments? Thank you. Will the agency attorney please read the consent agenda?
URA Resolution Number 336, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing the city manager to execute guaranteed maximum price GMP Amendment Number Two to the Progressive Design Build Agreement for the Beckman Road Corridor Project with Toboni Sun, a joint venture, and minutes of the June 19, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Seconded.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero. And that concludes our agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency, and I will adjourn the meeting at 6:26 PM.
Councilor Linville?
Here.
Councilor Berry?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Council President Ocrewall and Councilor Dunwell are excused.
Thank you. Will everyone please stand to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
I second it.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. That brings us to our mayor's business section of our meeting tonight, and we are going to really feature the civics academy graduation, which we're really pleased to do. So along with our whole city council, and we're sorry that two of our council members were not able to join us tonight because they would have loved to have been here today, but we're all just really proud to welcome 26 Wilsonville residents who spent all this time, attention, curiosity, and effort to graduate from this year's program and to attend the meetings. So to graduate, participants can only miss two meetings throughout the six-month-long civics academy program that meets once a month. Additionally, we had two staff members from the library audit the program this year. The program, the civics academy program features a city, a number of city-hosted meetings and events that are designed to prepare community members for roles on being active members of the community, helping orient people that you may know in the community as to where they can find out information, where they can share information, get questions answered. Perhaps then some of you will want to join and apply for some of our local government boards and commissions, we often see that, or some of our local area nonprofits, and just take various roles in helping our community be a better place to live. And the civics academy offers the opportunity to learn a lot about the programs and operations of the city. You all know all about it, but for anyone watching, this is the chance where you can really learn how Wilsonville works, how we work with our neighbors, other agencies, and how we end up with clean water and sidewalks and all the things that make a good city. And we also hope you'll get to know all of the members of the city council and the staff in our department so that again, you can be a part of making this a great place to live. As we found in the arts, culture, and heritage strategy, one of the most important things the city can help with, and this is what we heard from people who contributed to that strategy and open house efforts that we did, that one of the most important things we can do as members of our community is to help build the capacity of local nonprofit organizations. Sometimes we've gotten down to a small number of people running events over the years, and we hope that people who take part in civics academy can also help strengthen those nonprofits because they often need more people to help energize their work. So before we recognize all of our graduates, I would like to provide, I would like to acknowledge there were 10 participants this year who had 100% attendance at all of the civics academy year who had 100% attendance at all of the Civics Academy sessions this year. And I know sometimes it's impossible not to miss one, so we understand that, but for those who did, who were able to meet, make 100% attendance, I'd like to recognize them. Angela Doglin, Aster Getchichu, Becky Fromheart, Bill Bagnall, Carl Zargosa, Chris Knudsen, Mary Vogel, Randy Shearer, Rhett Martin, and Travis Weber. So Zo Monbert, our city assistant to our city manager, who's been really working very closely with this program for a long time, will now do a little presentation on this program.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to provide, those that are watching and may not be very familiar with the program, a little background, and then I'll leave it to you to provide their certificates. This program was created in 2015, and when the city created it, it was intended, as you mentioned, to get, give people an opportunity to learn about the city. I am impressed by the fact that we continue to see residents sign up for this every single year. We provide up to 25 slots, and we've added a few seats over the past five years because there's so much interest, and this year was by far our largest class. Not only were they the largest class, they had 26 graduates. We filled TBFNR, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, for their last meeting, which is one of the most popular to learn about fire and police because we do have a pretty neat department over at the PD. And we filled the room. We had to go look for extra chairs. So we are going to have to be a little bit more restrictive going back to 25, 30 at the absolute max next year because we've learned that there is a capacity on how many folks that we can actually engage and give a meaningful experience to. The program has evolved every year. We have tried a few different ways of doing it. We had to evolve during the pandemic, but we have learned that that in-person approach has worked really well. It gives our community members not only an opportunity to learn directly from their elected officials, also from our staff within many of our outward-facing departments, and it gives them an opportunity to meet each other. We find that there are individuals that have lived here for 20, 30 years, and those that have just moved in picked up their Boonsbury messenger and decided to join to learn about their community. So I'm excited to say that this program has been successful, and we continue to see applicants year after year. We continue to offer tour options to our neighbor at Coffee Creek Correctional Facility, as well as to the State Capitol. We have modified the State Capitol tour since it's currently closed and because of the pandemic, but we have been able to still give an excellent opportunity for our residents to meet directly with their elected officials at the state level. I hope that we will see many of these community members volunteering throughout the city moving forward and on our future boards and commissions, as this is a great way to get involved with our community. And I would also like to take just a brief moment to thank Gina Troha and Kim Belize for keeping the program going while I was out for a few months. It does take a lot of legwork to keep this program going and making sure that our residents have a connection at the city, so when they have their questions following up, that we can provide that information. There were questions about learning more about the Ask Wilsonville tool on our website. We've also taught them about the Let's Talk Wilsonville, so they now know how to provide comments to the city as well as have that two-way communication. Finally, the 2024 program is set for next year, and they will occur on the second Tuesday of most months from December 23 to June of '24, and applications will be open from September 9 to November 10. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor, for the presentation of certificates.
Okay. Well, thank you. We're going to, City Manager Brian Cosgrove is going to join me over here. We will ask for each of you to come up and get your certificate, and there is another item coming to them.
Would you like me to make a comment about that?
Yes, please. And after the certificates, please stay because we'd like to have a picture with all of you, and we have treats to share.
As the mayor just noted, we did, for the past two or three years, we have made a personalized city sign for all of our graduates, and these are real street signs. They are blue for information. They will have each of our participants' last name on them. We had a minor issue with the supply chain, but they are coming, they are ordered, and I will work with you all to get them. There are a few rules with the signs. They are for your individual use, and they may not appear on any streets. But we thank you for your participation.
All right. Thank you, Zo. Is this working?
Yep.
Okay. The first member of the Civics Academy I'd like to ask to come up is Angela Doglin. Thank you. Everybody in this group is going to be an additional ambassador for keeping this a great place to live in, so thank you so much. Next is Aster Getchichu. And Autumn Paul. Avery Eckley. And Becky Fromheart. Nice that you got the certificate and the sign. Bill Bagnall.
Want to meet in the supermarket?
I know. So great to have so many more friends. Bill Greeley. Bob Zeal. Carl Zargosa. Zargosa. Cecilia Barlow. Danny Solomon. John Andrews. With all these Civics Academy graduates, we're going to get a lot done. Kathleen Leida. Chris Knudsen. Is that right?
Yes, you did.
Oh. Thank you. Lynn Sanders. Mary Vogel. Thank you. And Natalia Okilba. And Nolan Thomas. Randy Shearer. And Rebecca Lunnkey. Rhett Martin.
Hi, Rhett.
Roger Fontis. Samantha, oh, Travis Weber. Thank you.
And do you want to just mention?
Yes.
Do you want to mention the rest that aren't here? We'll get there.
And we did have a few that could not be here tonight, who I'd like to read their names to. Amy Eckley, Samantha Barker, Aldo Solano, and Avery Eckley. So we will now come up here for a picture, but I do want to say that I think all of, I would speak for all of our city councils, that we do like to hear from people, and if you see things that you like, that's good to hear about. If you see things that you're worried about or don't like, or want to find out more about, please let us know, because we want to know about that. So let's come up here for a picture and bring your certificates, please, when our councilors join us.
In the well?
In the middle, please. Just watch out for the
Yeah, watch the cords.
And so far, nobody's gripped on these yet. Give me always worry. So we'll just
How are you?
Gather around. This isn't really great.
There you go.
Thank you. So Carolyn, or Counselor Berry, and
If you guys want to do two, at least two rows, you might need some kneeling if you're comfortable.
There we go.
People that are comfortable kneeling, that would be great, to fit a few more individuals in.
Do we have to get closer in?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Counselor Linville, you want to get it? When you tell us
Mayor, can you step a little to the left?
Sure.
Perfect.
And then Counselor Linville, if you can move in just slightly, please.
I think that's pretty good. Lots of smiling and looking this way.
All right. And you don't look at anyone's camera but mine. All these guys, all like eyes wandering in different directions. If anyone else would like to take a picture, now's your chance.
These are probably going to end up in the New York Times.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And now we have Thank you.
Oh, the microphone.
Yes. We've got lemonade and crumbled cookies.
Yes. Grab some sugar.
So we're doing a recess?
Yes, exactly.
We're doing a little mini-recess so you can get that quick sugar high before legal day.
The neighbors, send them our way. And then just my O program.
And then just my O program. Everything is just.
I will reconvene the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council. And we are now going to do our citizen, our information section. And I am going to cover some other mayor's business items a little bit later on the agenda.
Okay.
Brian?
Sounds good.
Just, okay. So I'd like to introduce Susan Schenk, who's going to give us a program on the Historical Society.
Thank you. And I'm a graduate of the civic, we called it the Citizens Academy, I think, when I took it.
Yes.
So I'm here representing the Historical Society because we have been the beneficiary of several community enhancement program grants. And so this is my report on one of the grants that we have wrapped up. And it was set up for 2020 through 2022, and we wrapped it up in December of 2022. All right, let's see if I can make this work. Here we go. So the grant funded our efforts to organize and preserve our historic photographs. It's part of a long-term project to educate the community about our history. And so COVID restrictions pushed the end date to 2022. It was originally supposed to expire in July, or end of June in 2022, but because of COVID, we couldn't really get access to our photos in the way that we needed to. We hired an archivist with part of the grant money, who, she was the same archivist who went through our artifacts and organized them. And there's a picture of her working to digitize our photos. Wrong direction. Okay, so on the left, there's a picture of where the photos were stored. They're up in the attic of the library. Not the best storage conditions, but that's where all our stuff is. They were very haphazardly stored, they were unidentified, and totally inaccessible. So the grant funded the professional services of an archivist to go through the photos, to sort them, the purchase of archival storage supplies, so that they're not just in cardboard boxes, a computer and scanner, paid for enlargements, and there's several, three of the enlargements over there. And then ancillary services, because some of our photos were too big to fit in our scanner, and so we paid a professional service to scan those. Come on. Okay, hold on. Here we go. So her job, Sarah, was to sort the photos to number, to give each photo a code, a number code in a very professional format, not just willy-nilly numbers. You know, she scanned them by collections. She scanned each photo, the front and the back, in two different formats, so that at later time, if we want to access those photos, we can use the different formats, working with a professional photography studio, they can use the different formats in different ways. She entered them into a database, which she had developed the year before with a previous grant called PassPerfect. And so these are all now scanned and stored in the PassPerfect. You can see partially there on her computer screen is one of the photos that she has just scanned. And then she created a series of digital files. So this is what a page looks like out of the database. It's a museum-quality program, and this is one of the photos. So there's a picture there, it looks like Boone's Ferry. And then there's a description of the photo. And then any information she has, she put in here, and we can continue to add to this database as we get more information about it. One of the things that we discovered, to nobody's surprise, was a lot of the photos are not identified. You know, it's just a group of people. Like, that photo over there of the young ladies, all dressed up, sitting, drinking beer, sitting on the grass, who are they? What are they doing? We don't really know. But our database will become searchable once we get everything finished in there. So we enlarged some photos, we enlarged 15 of them. There's a picture there of, they were on display at the library for the month of May. We now have the capacity to enlarge any photo that's in the collection, that's in the database, because we can just extract it and take it to a professional service that will enlarge it. They're all digital now. So there's just a couple of the photos. So we had a number of volunteers. Our society has about 15 members. Most of the members are members of support, they don't really come to meetings. So we had some volunteers. There's two women there who are putting the smaller black-and-white photos into archival acrylic sleeves, so that they won't be damaged. Because the photos are now digitally stored, there's very little need to actually handle the photos anymore, which was one of our objectives. People donated equipment, we had a monitor, a computer monitor donated. The community center gave us space for the archivist to work, so she didn't have to work up in the attic of the library. Another society member donated a digital photo display that runs through several hundred images at a time, you know, over a course of time. And that was our display at the library. And her, that black-and-white photo, that looks like it's on the left side there, is really her little automatic photo screen that just rotates through the pictures. So this is what's left of our photo collection. It's in a little better order, there's still a lot more work to do, but we got the bulk of the photos taken care of, digitized. We have a lot of ambition. Even though we've used up our money, and the funding for this project is over, we are still developing ways to do the following. One is to collect missing information about our collection, and we have a lot of information that's missing. We want to consolidate access to our photos. The library also has a photo collection, Historic, but they're not merged. And so we're working with Burton at the library to merge our digital access, so anybody can access the library's photos or our photos. We want to solicit donations of photos from the public, because we're sure there's a lot of historic photos in people's houses, and nobody knows who they are. And they say, well, that's Great Grandpa Albert, but that's all we know. We want to set up a scanning day for the public to come to add to our collection. We want to feed these photos to the media, Facebook, the spokesman, Boone's Ferry Messenger, trying to find out more information about the pictures. We need to examine the leftover photos that have not been scanned. Some of them are just very bad quality, or they're deteriorated, or they're in some kind of frame that we can't open, because it will destroy the photos. We want to develop a policy for public use of the images, because occasionally we get a request, like McMinniman's has a lot of historic photos there on their wall, and we have photos that other organizations might be interested in, but we need a policy for how do we let them have access to them? Do we charge them? Do we, you know, what? Find more opportunities to exhibit. We have now about 30 of these large photos. And then examine undocumented and unscanned donated photos from more recent time. We have a lot of black or colored pictures that people gave us, you know, from somebody's anniversary party, but we don't know who they are or what significance there is to it. So we want to thank you for your support for our little volunteer-run 501(c)(3) Wilsonville-Boone's Very Historical Society. There's our mission, is to preserve, celebrate, and educate about Wilsonville's unique history. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation. I did have a question. Can you talk a little bit about the relationship, or maybe shared resources around the Wilsonville Historical Society and any regional or the state of Oregon Historical Society, and how that might work?
We have recently joined the Oregon, I think it's called the Heritage Coalition, which gives us access to other organizations and some of the events they have, some of the trainings, meetings, but we haven't done much with it.
But I'm sure as this develops, this could be a resource for them to know about the cities of Oregon, too.
Right, yes.
And especially Wilsonville. Well, thank you for the report on the use of funds, we really appreciate it. And do you have any questions for us?
No, we have two, we work with Zoe on this. We have two grants that we're wrapping up. One is converting our oral histories, which have been on VHS tape, into a digital format using Willamette Falls Media. We are mostly done with that, and now we get to do the fun part, and that is to extract from those oral histories, which were collected about 20 years ago, vignettes, and stories, and people that we can feature in some kind of outreach. One of the things that Rosemary Ricken is working on, your friend Rosemary, is putting together a little booklet called Growing Up in Wilsonville 1900, where she's putting together photos from the collection and stories from the viewpoint of a young person, maybe, you know, like a 12-year-old, making up stories to go with some of the photos, like the big snowstorm, the schoolhouse, going to the store, getting to school, things like that. So that money is mostly gone, but we'll be wrapping that one up. And the final one is our grant where we're collecting contemporary oral histories. After the last three years of crazy, craziness, we are trying to collect some people's experience about what life was like over the last three years, because that's kind of history, but it's very contemporary. And so we're still working on collecting those interviews and transcribing them, and then coming up with a plan to make that information public.
All right, well, thank you very much. Look forward to hearing about the next couple of chapters. So that brings us back to our, some of the items from the mayor's report. And I would like to bring up the item of business pertaining to appointment of a community member to serve on a city committee. And we had an opportunity to fill an unexpired term, and this is a short term, because it was the established remaining segment of a term, and there will be an opportunity for reappointment. But I would like to ask if one of the, if Councilor Linville could make the motion.
I can, I'm not quite sure that I have the pronunciation correct, but I'll give it my best.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, I would like to, I move to ratify the appointment of David Seeha to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning 7/17/2023 to 12/31/2023.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 3-0. Thank you. Recently, just touching on some of the recent activities, we had the last in the series of lectures put on by our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, which is made up of people living in our area, who have been spending a lot of time developing that committee. And I attended this last lecture as well. I think I was able to go to all but two of them, and I know other councillors have gone to some of them as well. It was on July 6th, which was one of those pretty warm nights, right after all the fireworks, and it was an excellent presentation given by a man named Ian Jaquiss. He is the Community Engagement Manager for Relay Resources Nonprofit. And the topic of, the title of his talk was Advocating for Employment with People with Disabilities. That was one of the main areas that he addressed. And also, looking at our inherent bias as just different individuals, everybody's different in how they were brought up, and things that they were advised by parents, or teachers, or other people in their lives, about how to respond to someone they maybe have never met, or do know in their lives, who's living with some form of disability, whether it be hearing, to movement, to vision, all across the board. And it was very thought-provoking. It is going to be on our, it is going to be available on our website after they finish editing the video. But it was very thought-provoking, and it was also, he did it in a really fun way, and we had really good discussions. So I really encourage people to watch the recording of that lecture. We have something big coming up soon, on July 29th. It is the Korean War Memorial 70th Anniversary Armistice Commemoration, and the preview of the Interpretive Center that is going to be opening here in Wilsonville. It's real, this has been underway for a long time, this opening of the Interpretive Center. And the program will start at 10:00 a.m. at Town Center Park at the Oregon Korean War Memorial. And the actual armistice commemoration honors Oregonians and Americans who died defending democracy and freedom for South Korea in a war from 1950 to 1953 with North Korea. And technically, the Korea, as I'm sure we know, the Korean War never actually ended, and rather, there was a cessation of hostilities with an armistice truce. So traditionally, this observance ceremony includes posting of the colors and performances by a Korean-American choir and others here in Wilsonville. So we've had a series of really wonderful commemoration events here in Wilsonville the last few years. So this year, there will be a presentation of the Korean Ambassador for Peace Medal to veterans, including posthumously. And so we will be, and we'll be hearing speeches by several notable Oregon leaders, including State Senator James Manning of Eugene, who served in the Army for over 24 years, Kelly Fitzpatrick, who is the Director of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, Heo Soon Peter Kim, who's President of the Korean Society of Oregon, and Chuck Losardi, President of the Korean War Veterans Association, the Oregon Trail Chapter. We will also be joined by the General Counsel of the Republic of Korea in Seattle, So Eunji Unji. And then after the ceremony, the city's Park and Recreation Department, along with Korean War Memorial Foundation of Oregon, will host a preview of the upcoming Oregon Korean War Memorial Interpretive Center. So I really encourage the council to go there, and members of the community. It's going to be an excellent program. Coming up on August 19th is Wilsonville Brew Fest, and I would like to note that it is scheduled for August 19th at the Piazza at Villebois, in that neighborhood, right in the center of the neighborhood. And it will bring some of the best Oregon breweries to the neighborhood for a full day of beer tasting, food, music, and family fun. And last, for my report, I will add that our next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 7th, starting at 7:00 p.m. That brings us to community input and community announcements. Do we have anyone waiting to present? Thank you. We'll now move on to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with councillor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have not had very many meetings since our last council meeting, so I have really nothing to report on. My opioid settlement, treatment, prevention, and recovery board meeting that was scheduled for the 12th of July was canceled. As many, it seems like July is the month for cancellations. People are off and doing other things. But things that are upcoming, I did want to report that the Rotary Summer Concerts are going to be starting soon, and they're going to be four consecutive Thursdays, beginning Thursday, July 20th. And these are the Rotary Club of Wilsonville Free Summer Concert Series at Town Center Park. And the first concert will be, as I mentioned, July 20th, and it is a band called Taken by the Sky, and they are a tribute band to Fleetwood Mac. And so I have even been able to convince my young, my young adult children that they ought to come, so they're excited about doing that. And then the next three consecutive Thursday evenings Rotary is hosting on the 27th Johnny Limbo and the Lug Nuts, which is always a very popular event. August Thursday is Conjunto Alegre, and on August the 10th is the last concert with Hit Machine. And that was a very popular group, especially last year. So I'm excited that they will be coming back. So plan, get your chair, come out on a nice evening, get your bug spray on, and enjoy some concerts in the park. I also wanted to mention that on the 26th of July, the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce is holding their annual fundraiser golf tournament. And that golf tournament provides scholarships for workforce training students, which is a really great, that's a really great cause for the chamber to do, always fun. So I will be attending that with a group from, of our city folks as well. And our Greater Portland Inc., Small Cities Consortium meeting that was scheduled for the 27th of July has been canceled. And so I will also attend the Korean War Memorial Preview Ceremony, and I'm really looking forward to that.
Thank you. All right, councillor Barry.
So I agree that July's been a light month for meetings, that most of the meetings have been canceled. I am planning on attending on Wednesday of this week, two meetings for the C4, the Clackamas County C4, the subcommittee meeting in the morning to review transportation planning, and then at noon, the second meeting with the C4 for toll strategies. And then the other announcement I wanted to talk about is that the Parks and Recreation Department is continuing their free movies in the parks that started last week, and the next one will be Friday, July 28th. And then Fridays on August 11th and August 25th, the movies in the parks start at 8:30 at Memorial Park near the River Shelter. So I hope everybody comes, it's a really fun time.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on the agenda?
Resolution Number 3021, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute guaranteed maximum price, GMP, Amendment Number Two to the Progressive Design Build Agreement for the Beckman Road Corridor Project with Toboni Sun, a joint venture. Resolution Number 3068, resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Mayor Reed to provide landscape architecture, civil engineering, and planning services for the Frog Pond West Neighborhood Park Project, Capital Improvement Project Number 9175. Resolution Number 3075, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the purchase of one utility inspection van from Q's Inc. Resolution Number 3077, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County for the Regional Advanced Transportation Controller and Signal Optimization Project, and minutes of the June 19, 2023 city council meeting.
Thank you, and we have details at great length on all of these items in our packet, and councillors have reviewed those in advance, and so I will ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. And that brings us to our continuing business, which is second reading of Ordinance Number 880.
Ready for me?
Let me just start it.
Okay.
Let me ask you about the, do you want to read it first?
You, yes, yes, before you get into the whole thing, I can do that.
Yes, I want you to read the title, thank you.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 880, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting an updated transit master plan as a sub-element of the transportation system plan, replacing all prior transit master plans, and repealing Ordinance Number 805 and Ordinance Number 828.
Thank you. I call to order the Wilsonville City Council's second reading on Ordinance Number 880, as has been read. Does any member of the city council have questions for staff or the city attorney on Ordinance Number 880? ordinance number 880?
Looks like Dwight. No, no, I do not.
We do not have any questions. Hearing no questions, do I have a motion on ordinance number 880?
I move to adopt ordinance 880 on second reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we enact ordinance number 880. Is there any discussion? Is there any further discussions or remarks by any council member before I call for a vote?
Well, Your Honor, I would just like to say, I think this plan is very comprehensive. I think it reflects really the needs of our community, both in expanding services and continuing services. I think it's an excellent connection to our neighbors, both in Canby, in Oregon City, in Tualatin, and Salem. And so I really commend our director and our staff and consultants for the development of the plan.
Thank you.
Well said.
And I was just reviewing our council goals today for another, a couple of other things we were looking at, and just wanted to reconfirm that having a well-thought-out, robust transportation plan is very important to our city. And I'm, again, appreciate all the detail that went into that. We have our transit director here. Would you like to make any comment, Mr. Brashear?
Well, Dwight Brashear, your transit director. Kelsey Lewis was the project manager for this, for the, for the city, and she did an incredible job. She is globe trotting right now, and I think she is somewhere around London and headed to Italy. So well-deserved vacation, but, what was that?
115 degrees in Rome.
Well, she deserves that. I, she would have been here, and she, again, she did an incredible job. But I do want to thank the council for their support on this plan. We are attempting to write the next chapter of transportation and transit in the city of Wilsonville and the surrounding areas. This is, as councillor Linville said, a very, very robust plan. We're not going to get a whole lot of sleep over the next five years, but I can guarantee you, it'll be fun. And as we move towards alternative fuels, this plan is designed to get us there. It's designed to connect us and our residents to the areas that they want to go. And Tigard is one that wasn't mentioned, but it is in this plan. And I'm just excited, this is my second TMP in the six years that I've been here, and this is by far the most robust, and it's going to take all of us in this room and some that aren't working very hard to accomplish these things, but I know that we can do it. SMART is an incredible agency, and we always punch above our weight class, and that's because we have your support. So thank you, and onward and upward, and yeah.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I also want to note my appreciation for you, Mr. Brashear, going to Washington, D.C. with Mark Audenat, our Director of Government Relations, and me, and several other mayors and cities. And we met with, as you know, many, many people representing us at the federal level, and we heard a lot of compliments and received a lot of questions and curiosity about this great transit system. And so thank you for your, everything you've done with your staff to help us get there.
Well, if you're going to be high-profile, you better be good.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye, and those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Councillor Linville.
Aye.
Councillor Barry.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
And councillor President Akervall and councillor Dunwell are excused.
The motion passes 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to city managers' business.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I do have a, something I wanted to ask you.
Oh, sure.
Is, I know it's a little ways off, but we have a party in the park coming up next month.
Yes. When is the date on the neighborhood barbecue? It's August, should be on our calendar. Do you have our website pulled up? It's August 24th.
August 24th.
Yes.
Okay. So August 24th, that's our first public advertisement at the city council meeting.
Yes, live, live music, lots of friendly, family, fun stuff to do in the park, and the water features will be on, and it'll probably be hot, so.
Great. All right.
24th? I have it down the 23rd. So am I wrong? It's wrong. Must be wrong.
I think the 23rd is the employee summer picnic.
Oh, maybe that's what it is.
And of course, we would love to see if you can make it to the employee picnic. We would love to have you.
The more picnics, the better. So it's August 24th. Thank you. At 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Causegrove. That brings us to legal business.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to give a quick update on the implementation of the new camping regulations. We're a little over two weeks into the implementation. We have had some community members take advantage of the designated camping areas, and we have had 100% compliance with our regulations. So people have come within the hour as, are designated, and left within the same, that same timeframe. And we've had some of our team make contact with those people to give them the new business cards that we've created that have the information on services. And I've also reached out to Lee over at Wilsonville Community Sharing to let her know and give her an update as well, since she is now certified, CHA certified, to do intake. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but so far, it's been a pretty smooth implementation. And we've also been having our regular check-ins with the implementation team to, just in case anything does come up, that we can be on the same page.
So may I ask, what, what are the two piles of shavings or bark or whatever that's, that are there in, on the, on the west side, east side of the, of the plantings?
I will have to check back with you. I don't, it's mulch, but I think it was just to lay down more mulch, but I can't recall.
It is. It's to keep the moisture around the plants.
For its plants.
Yeah, they'll put it in the base.
Okay. All right. I didn't know whether there was a plan to cover some of the camping area with, okay.
So I have a question. Are, are the campers using the car parking, or are they doing more tent camping?
We've seen both. Yeah. Yeah, we've had one pretty consistent vehicle camper, and then we had two people who were together camp one night in the non-vehicle camping area, but we haven't seen them since the one night that they've been here.
So has the connection to services, have those conversations been taking place and with the intake? And so just, you know, talking about those things.
Yep. Our code compliance coordinator, David Valenzuela, made contact with all three of the individuals and talked with them a little bit, and gave them the cards about the connection to services.
And, and Lee Crosby will also be engaged.
Yeah.
Because we wanted that to be connected with the county.
Right.
Built for Zero.
Yeah, and that's all the information on the card, get folks to the services that they need.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and our meeting is adjourned at 8:15 p.m. Say, Brian?